Good morning. I called order the March 21st, 2023, meeting of the Sling County Board of Commissioners. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Shadwick? Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
I ask you to please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We now move to the citizens' input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commissioners for the consent agenda. Are there any items that commissioners wish to remove from today's consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of the public forum agenda, approval of county commission minutes for March the 7th, and approval of county commission minutes for March 14th? Any comments? Take a motion to approve the agenda then.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved in second that we approved today's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries four zero. We will move right into the action items. Item number one.
2023 federal fund exchange agreement with Justin Mater, county engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
So I'm here today to approve the 2023 federal fund exchange agreement between KDOT and Sling County. Sling County will be receiving $253,207.16 in federal funds for this year. And this is actually a decrease of around $32,400 from last year, so that's a little disappointing. But what this agreement will do is it'll convert these federal funds into state funds at a 90% exchange rate, and so that'll give us an exchange total of $227,886.44. Once these funds are converted, you know, they can be used by Sling County for any kind of transportation-related expense, whether that is maintenance or new construction. You know, so the question arises, you know, why would we give up 10%? And really, the reason is, is if we left the money as federal dollars, okay, we have to go through the federal fund process. And so that would be going through, having a project through KDOT. And so it has to be with either a bridge, and this is a federal definition of a bridge project, or a major collector route. And it can't be used for maintenance. It has to be, would have to be used on new construction, meeting their, you know, very strict standards for design. Another reason is if we left them as federal funds, the design process, you know, takes anywhere from two to three years, you know, going through all the KDOT's submittals and approvals and meetings and buying right away is a very, very restrictive, you know, and very controlled process for that. And then, but really, you know, the history shows that a project going through federal funds, you know, will be about anywhere from 10% to 15% higher in bids, just because the contractors are knowing they're gonna have to deal with KDOT. You know, it's very similar, you know, the Simpson Road project was a federally funded project. It had different federal funds, you know, but Sling County, you know, loses control, you know, over what we can do on projects. And then again, and then on top of everything else, you know, we're gonna lose another 15% to hire a consulting firm to be the construction engineer, to do the inspections and all the documentation process. Again, that's a very regulated, controlled process for that. And so losing the 10%, you know, upfront to exchange these just kinda makes financial sense. Alternatives for action would be to sign the agreement, which converts the federal funds to state dollars, which will make the funds available to Sling County through a transportation reimbursement program, or do not sign the agreement and leave the dollars federal funds. These funds can only be used through a federally funded project procedure through KDOT. Staff recommends exchanging the federal funds by signing the agreement. Exchanging the funds will provide $227,886.44 of reimbursement dollars for any type of transportation-related project. And so once we're reimbursed for that, these funds will go into our 127 account, which is our special highway improvement fund. My office, you know, desires to use these funds to supplement our asphalt road maintenance program, and that's actually what we've done for the last three years. You know, so that's with supplementing our crack seal, chip seal, asphalt overlay, and shouldering program. Any questions?
Justin, you pretty well answered my questions that I already had going. You must have been able to read my mind, but the budget impact part, then taking it into the 127 account, and you've got it defined here, overlay, chip seal, crack seal, aggregate, shouldering. Does it have to be used for those items then? Is that, I mean, it's designated, or is that just what you plan on using it for?
That's what I would like to use it for. And so really, so how the process works is, you know, so this is a reimbursement program, and so, you know, these funds are setting in, I'm just gonna call them the Bank of KDOT, okay? And so the idea is to get it into the bank of Sling County. And so really, what I'd like to do is really any project, any maintenance, you know, whether it's buying rock, whether it's replacing a bridge, you know, I'll use these, those projects to get the reimbursement dollars into the Bank of Sling County, okay? So once it's in our 127 account, then I would like to use, you know, use the money that's setting in our 127 for like our asphalt overlay. When we make a payment to the contractor, we'll pull that money out of the 127 to make one of those payments to the contractor.
But you don't have to tell the federal government in advance what you're gonna use this money for?
No.
That's my, that's my point. It can go into anything that you want it to go for in road and bridge. Could that up to include equipment?
Oh, I don't believe so. No, it has to actually go on the road somewhere.
Okay, well, that's good enough. I mean, $227,000 is, actually, it's $253,000.
That's the, that's the amount of federal funds that we're receiving, and then once we exchange it at that 90%,
There we go, yeah.
then we'd get to $227,000.
And you've defined what would happen if we don't? If we would have to jump through more hoops, wait longer?
Oh, yes.
For a, I mean, that doesn't even pay the interest on, so. Other comments from commissioners?
A couple of questions, Justin. Can you, can you tell us why the decrease, how this money is generated and how it's dispersed?
Somewhat, you know, I don't know. So, you know, the Kansas counties together, you know, gets a pot of money of federal funds, okay? And then before that money is distributed to each county, which that distribution is based off of their formula funds, so it's the same formula that they distribute the special city-county highway tax fund. But what they'll do is they'll pull off the top, I know of three programs. I think there's one more, and I can't quite remember it, but one is load rating program. So we're in year, I believe it's five, of load rating all the bridges in the state of Kansas, for county bridges. We're locals, so county and city bridges. That's a huge chunk of money. I mean, that's, you know, several million dollars, I think up to, you know, $5 million a year that they'll scrape off the top before they make distribution. The other one is the underwater bridge inspections and pin and hanger bridge inspections. You know, so even though we don't have any underwater pin and hanger, you know, we are, in a sense, paying for some of that because they scrape it off the top, you know, the cost of that before they distribute it. And so I think that the load rating program is the one that really makes a big impact. And each year, they, you know, the number's not always the same, you know. So this year, we could be doing a higher number of bridges, you know, load rating, you know, which could be taking more of the funds away before distribution. And we could also be receiving lower, less federal funds this year. I wouldn't think so, but that is a possibility.
And my second question, is there ever a time when we are involved with KDOT on a project where it behooves us to take the full amount of the federal funds?
I don't believe so. I mean, just the, you know, the bids that come in. If you take the same project and, you know, you bid it through the federal aid process and bid it through the local funds, it's, you're gonna have a 10% to 15% higher, higher cost going through the federal aid process. So I don't ever see where that's, that makes financial sense.
When the Simpson Road was done, that was done by the KDOT, and they put out the bids?
Yes, you know, so it was designed by us. It was using federal funds, but it was a different program. That's going through the Highway Safety Improvement Program, and so that's a different pot of federal funds that we cannot exchange. That has to stay federal funds, and so that's where that project came from.
Thank you.
They got my question answered.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-55 as presented.
Second.
I would like to correct that to 2023-56.
56, I'm sorry, excuse me.
It's been moved in second that we approve 2023-56 RFA. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries four zero. Thank you, Justin. We'll move to item number two.
Bid award for 2023 bituminous chip sealing with Justin Mater, county engineer.
The floor is yours, Justin.
Okay, so my office opened bids for our bituminous chip seal on March 9th at 11 o'clock. We did receive five bids this year, so we were pretty happy with that number. Circle C paving was the low bid for all project locations, which is around 46 miles of road. You should have in your packet the bid tabs, which shows each bid from each, all the contractors, as well as you should have a project location map, which gives the roads that we're gonna chip seal this year. So chip seal can't begin any sooner than August 7th of this year, but it also must be completed by October 27th. And what we stipulate in all of our asphalt maintenance projects is that no work can be done during wheat harvest activities, so even if they're working out there, they'll have to pull off the road, let harvest do its thing, and then they can start again. Alternatives for action would be to, one, accept a bid as indicated in staff recommendation; two, accept a bid from a different contractor; or three, reject all bids and direct staff to the wishes of the board. Staff recommends accepting the bid from Circle C paving for the amount of estimated work to equal $1,367,076.94. Funds for this project will be taken out of our contractual asphalt work budget line item. This has a balance of $2.7 million. And so other work that's gonna be taken from this account, you know, is our asphalt overlay, our crack seal, which has already been awarded, and our aggregate shouldering work. Any questions?
Questions? Any public comment? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we award the bid of 2023 bituminous crack seal 2023-55. Second motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 2023-55 as presented. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries four zero. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number three, please.
Patagonia Electronic Health Record Agreement with Justin Tiller, or excuse me, Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
We've got too many Justins, Jasons, and so forth around here. All right, good morning, Jason.
Good morning, gentlemen. So we issued an RFP for an electronic health record system in November of 2022. This process will allow us to move from an inefficient paper-based system to an electronic health record and increase efficiencies in our clinical operations. The review committee received six proposals, and those were graded in accordance with the RFP. We had demonstrations on the top two scoring proposals, as well as reference checks, including feedback from health departments using these systems. The results of those demonstrations and reference checks resulted in the committee choosing Patagonia as the preferred proposal. Now, the committee negotiated the contract with Patagonia as the preferred vendor, including the review and contract term negotiation with county council Mike Montoya, and this was completed on March 8th. We are requesting that the county commission authorize and sign the attached service agreement with Patagonia. Implementation planning set to begin within 30 days of contract signature completion with full migration to the new EHR system expected in July. So of course, alternatives for action, approve and sign the service agreement as presented, deny the service agreement, or send us back for more information. We recommend approving and signing the service agreement with Patagonia for the implementation of an electronic health record system at the health department. In terms of budget, implementation costs and first-year fees would be $60,318. If we do make a lump sum payment for that first-year fees, it does provide us a discount, so the implementation cost would actually be $59,111.64. Year two through five costs are outlined for the total five-year cost of $161,487.12. We currently have $74,000 earmarked for electronic health records and our expanding local capacity grant that will, of course, cover the cost of implementation. And the annual cost of years two through five have been factored into our annual state formula grant to cover those costs, and so there will be no impact to the health department's budget. And with that, questions?
This is something new, I take it, Jason, altogether.
Yes.
On your budget impact portion of it, you mentioned it's gonna cost $59,111 if we pay up, but what line on, does this come from the health department's general budget, or is there?
It will come from our general budget. At this current time, like I said, we have grant funds that'll cover it, and so the expenditure will come from our budget, but not create any kind of need for changing our overall expense lines.
No shortfall or anything like that, so?
No.
Okay?
Because at the end of the, at the end of the quarter, we'll submit grant reimbursement, and then within a month or so, have that money back into our budget from that expenditure. So it ends up being a zero sum as far as the impact to our budget.
Are those federal grants that you'd be applying for then, or?
Well, they're state grants that we've already had.
Further questions from commissioners, please?
One question, Jason.
Yes, sir.
I assume that IT was brought in to look at this.
Brad was part of the committee. The system is 100% HIPAA compliant. Brad went through and had a lot of technical IT questions that they answered to his satisfaction, and with IT as part of the committee was also part of the choice for this. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the commissioners? Is there any public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-57 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 2023-57. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries four zero. We'll move to item number four.
Planning Commission reappointments with Tim Hamilton, planning and zoning administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Hamilton.
Good morning. We have three reappointments, one for Sean Alvarez, one for Michael Trau, and the other for Dwayne Flaherty. They have both, all three of them expressed interest in being reappointed to the planning commission for, I think, another three-year term for each. And so, and this will just be, you know, reappointing them for that duration, so.
Tim, is there such a thing as term limits on these committees? I recognize two or three, both, all of these names as having been on there for quite some time, so.
Well, the, I think that the, we, this board, I think, considered at one time, I think it was several years ago, a term limit requirement, but it failed because it was determined that the planning commissioners, these, a lot of these volunteer boards are very difficult to find people to fill those positions. And so the thought was just let them stay on. Now, there's, there are limits to as far as chairmanships. You can only be a chair for like maybe two years or something like that, two or three terms, and then you have to, it switches over to somebody else. But as far as term limits in general on planning commissioners, no, because it was just determined it would be too difficult to really find replacements as it already is with.
Don't misread me that I'm advocating that we put term limits on. I'm not doing that at all. I'm just, just kinda curious out loud, and I totally understand the reasons that you outlined right there, that, as to why we don't do that, so. Any other questions from commissioners?
Tim, I've just got one. It's, are there any other interest forms out there right now? Has anybody else said that they would like to serve on the planning, the county planning commission?
Every once in a while, we'll get someone expressing an interest, and I think we're trying to keep a list of potential, we don't have any now.
Don't have any now, okay.
None now, but we.
Okay.
Anyone else? Public comment? Tim, you wanna?
Norman Mountslana, there should be term limits, two terms and then out for at least one term. Then you can come back. That's how it's done in other places. Because we need a different view. You might get a younger person has the better idea. Maybe old is good sometimes, too, but there should be term limits on every person.
All right, I'll ask you to step up and fill out that form when you leave today.
I learned in military, never volunteer.
Anyone else? All right. I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2023-58 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 2023-58 as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries four zero. That is the, concludes the action items. We'll move into the informational portion of our meeting. Item number one.
County Administrator update with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman of the commission. Just wanted to remind commissioners and the audience that next Tuesday, we will not be here in this room. We will be out at Roden Bridge for our next study session. In January, we talked about an overall vision for the county for the next year. In February, we talked specifically about facilities, and in March, we're gonna talk specifically about roads and bridges. So we will be out at Roden Bridge in their conference room next Tuesday at 9:00, and we will be back here in two weeks. That's all I had this morning, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Sounds good. We'll move to item number two.
Commissioners' comments?
I'll just say that I did briefly attend the Equafest this weekend. It appears that they had a knockout crowd again, great crowds. The weather was pretty chilly, but the, what I attended looked like they were having a great show, so. Anyone else?
I attended the Equafest also. I'd like to thank David and his crew over there. I think they did a bang-up job getting everything put together for this and really keeping things going. Like I said, like Commissioner Vidrickson said, when I parked, I parked all the way down to where the old arena was down there, so there was a lot of people there those few days that they, that they were doing that. We also got coming up here on Thursday, we got the farm show coming up, and so I know David and his crew's over there right now trying to get a bunch of that stuff ready to go.
I will mention, I was able to visit with the Downtown Lions Club last week. I appreciate Hannah for helping me with my AV and presentation, and it was well-received, and it was really good to go out there and touch some of these civic groups and let them know what is going on with our county and what's happening countywide.
And I'll just reiterate on the subject is that the Equafest was just standout. I mean, it was, it was really well attained. It's, the rodeo on Saturday night was just, wow. I mean, it looked, it looked like the. I mean, it looked, it looked like there was more people there than a Liberty football game. I mean, it was, it was really well-attended. I loved the draft horse shows on Friday, and it was very good. The other thing is I attended the Central Kansas Mental Health Board meeting yesterday, and it's amazing of, just in Sling County, of the way and how many people are affected by the mental health crisis going on in the world today. And Sling County is not all alone out here, and a lot of, a lot of people are helping and trying to go forward with helping everyone that's affected by that disease. So anyway, that's, that's it.
Okay, we'll move on. I'm sure all the commissioners received the same notes that I did regarding the Kansas Silver Haired Legislature asking for a donation. They're gonna hold their 40th Annual Session in Topeka. I do think that we need to donate to them. They're not asking for a lot of money. They want $150, or they would like that, per authorized delegate. And I would turn to Phil on that one. Per authorized delegate, delegate, how many is that, or do we know, or?
I believe we have two, but we could double-check that with Rosie.
Okay, and I'll ask my other fellow commissioners if they feel the same that I do, that we should donate to this. And I mean, I'm thinking, I'm not sure where we take the money from, but we could certainly look at the commissioners' line item to take that money from. We don't hardly spend a dime out of that ever, it seems like, so that money is available, and that's just a trickle of what the senior citizens are asking for, so...
I agree.
Do we need to put that on as a formal item, Phil? Or can we just consensus, say we wanna donate to that, and?
No, if there's consensus of the commission, we could just have Linda process the payment, and the chairman will sign it. You'll all review it as part of the accounts payable, so...
I'll just make a motion, that way it's clean and everyone will vote. And, Mr. Chairman, I, I make a motion that the commission spend out of its contingency fund funds to sponsor the delegates to the Silver Haired Legislation.
Second.
Okay, I wanna clarify one thing, though. Do we want to give the $150 per authorized delegate? And it says, or more if possible. Do you, do you wanna designate an amount?
I would say we start with $150 per delegate to start with, and we'll see how that goes and get feedback from them.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we authorize a payment of $150 per delegate for the Silver Haired Legislature with payment to come from the commissioners' contingency fund. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries four zero. We'll move to item number three.
Announcements?
You want to put any announcements? Okay, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Salute.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you.